Good evening. The school board meeting for August 8th, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of one member of our BPS family, Ernestine McCullough, a teacher from Anderson Elementary. Thank you. This evening, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before getting into this evening's agenda, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Any board member recognitions? Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Yeah, real quick, obviously, school opening in two days. I went through the whole registration process today at Cocoa Beach, and it was awesome. So, thank you to all of the returning teachers, administrators, staff that are preparing our schools and getting them ready for an awesome opening day on Thursday. Can't wait for the first bus to roll. I'm sure you can either, Arby. Somebody may have seen in the news, but one of the Cocoa Beach students, Coral Schuster, was selected for the All USA Surf Team. Only six girls in the entire nation were selected for that. She's one of six in the U-16 Division. Pretty amazing, yet another legacy of surfing in this area, but something that is certainly worth, is noteworthy. And she was in Cocoa Beach today wearing her USA Surfing Team apparel, and it's pretty neat to see. So, congratulations to Coral. Lots of people that, in this community, lots of business partners, community partners that are helping our kids get, and our families get, ready for school. Multiple organizations pitch in, and just a few of them that I wanted to recognize. I know the city of Cape Canaveral held a backpack giveaway for Capeview Elementary. I think they gave out over 200 full backpacks there. I know our own Brevard Schools Foundation, back on the 29th, did their giveaway at Clearlake for some of our families in need there. And then, one of our greatest partners, Georgiana United Methodist, they filled 750 backpacks full of, full supplies and gave them all to Cambridge Elementary up in Cocoa, and there was about 200 backpacks left over, and they went over to Endeavor. So, I really appreciate, those are just a few of the organizations that are pitching in on a daily basis to help us out, but to get our students ready for that first day is awesome, and I thank you each for doing that. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. And Ms. Duskovich?
Yes, ma'am. Shout out to Jeff Arnott. He had his Second Annual Innovations and Transformation Summit at the Crown Plaza, which was a fantastic event. He brought in community members, businesses, teachers, leaders, and it was a two-day conference, and I think many great things came out of that. I attended a couple of breakout sessions and one of the general speakers, and felt the inspiration and highly motivated for some new innovative things within our adult education community, even our education community. I also want to, gosh, thank Stephanie Archer and her team. They've had a rough couple of weeks working to get one of our charter schools open that we now know is going to open, and I know that they have put in countless hours working with them, and so we appreciate all the hard work there. And, of course, shout out, as John, to our schools, our teachers, our principals, and our students that are going to start school on Thursday. I attended registration at Indy Atlantic Elementary with my son, and everything was moving, moving quickly. Teachers have their classrooms set up, ready to go, and I think everybody's excited.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Mr. Susan?
Thanks a lot. First, I wanted to say thank you to Dane and Sue Han for all the work you guys did over the summer. There's a construction project, I think, in every school, basically. There's got to be something that was turned, covered, muddied, run, anything like that for electrical, and you guys are really busting it with all your crew, and I just wanted to say thank you for pulling that all together. You had about two weeks to do a year's worth of projects, so thank you so much for that. The other thing I wanted to do is say thank you to the Brevard Zoo for piloting the first jobs program that we did. Eleven kids went to work for eight weeks as part of a STAR program through the vocational rehab. All eleven kids stuck it out. All eleven kids worked 40 hours a week, and the zoo really put in a process where those kids learned, not only got the job skills, but actually learned some good traits to move on. I also wanted to say that U-SSA Academy has brought on a lot of tie-ins to Viera High School. I wanted to shoot it out for them, send a shout out to them. And on August 15th, at the HBCA, the first construction industry board will be formed to have construction industry give our CTE programs a lot of support that they've needed throughout the years, and that's the first of three that we're going to create, which is manufacturing, and then the next one is aviation. I wanted to say, I'm really proud of the Economic Development Council for creating the CPT program where we just graduated our 100th kid and put them for jobs inside manufacturing. And I wanted to say thank you to Sable Quest, Manatee, Sherwood, and Suntree for having me over for registrations or for the faculty meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mr. Ziegler?
I've got just one item. I want to thank Mark Langdorff and his staff and everybody who worked so hard to get our third and final, maybe not final, healthcare center open in South Brevard in front of Central Middle School. It opened up last week after some, some facility challenges that had to be worked through. Also, thank you to Marathon, our provider, who's running those centers for stepping up and taking care of all the problems that occurred there. I'll say, my wife actually got to use it yesterday, and I was really nervous until I got the report that she enjoyed her visit, and she thought it was really, really great. She was absolutely amazed how much time they spent with her, and she goes, and then she said to me, she goes, "I think they were really just trying to sell me a lot of things because they asked me so many questions." I go, "They don't sell anything." She goes, "What?" It was like a sales pitch. I said, "But they care about your health. You can't spend a penny there." She, she didn't realize that. She just thought the whole time that they were asking her questions because of all these services that they could possibly provide. So, when she found out that it was completely free, she was incredibly impressed. So, my biggest critic has been satisfied, so I'm happy. Congratulations to Mark and the staff and everybody involved in getting those centers open.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Craig, I think you had a follow-up?
I apologize. I was going to save it to the end, but Ms. Duskovich brought it up, and I just wanted to add on to what she said about our Division of Innovation and Choice and Ms. Archer's team. The last six days have, you know, were leading up to school starting. We have choice programs, choice schools, parents trying to make sure that their kids in the right place, and I know that she spent, and her staff spent, a lot of time assisting a new charter school to open. And, and as many people know or may not know, as a sponsor, we have an inordinate amount of responsibility that is placed on us by the state to reach certain legal milestones along the way, and Ms. Archer and her staff were diligent in making sure that, that we, those things were met, and in many cases, the assistance of our own in-house legal counsel, Ms. Enball, were able to assist that, those individuals and that nonprofit to get that, that school opened. And so, on behalf of the students and the parents there, I do want to thank each of you for spending that time, and please pass to your staff the same thing. Your heroic efforts are well, well appreciated, so thanks.
All right. Dr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford. First, I want to just give notice of appreciation to not only Carolyn in Florida today, but all of our local media outlets for really covering our preparations as we get ready for what's going to be a phenomenal school district. We really appreciate that. Also, want to appreciate the collaborative efforts from BASSO, BFT, and 1010. The three of them and I meet on what's become a pretty regular basis to have teacher representation, principal representation, and non-instruction administrative staff representation around the same table on a very regular basis, working through really our commonalities and a couple of challenges. It really, I can tell you as superintendent, it really makes a difference to have that collaborative, and want to say thank you to those parties. Last night, we were able to attend the Exemplary Science Awards at our Eastern Florida State College and saw many of our phenomenal science teachers awarded for their, for their efforts. So, I mentioned the first day of school is coming, and we are ready to go, but what does that mean exactly? Well, I'll give you just a few highlights and really bragging on a bunch of wonderful staff members that put a lot of time into getting ready for our children in a couple of days. On July 26th, we had 60 bus drivers volunteer their time to participate in an eight-hour professional development session focused on positive student management techniques and skills. Volunteer their time. As you know, our bus drivers touch over 30% of our students every morning and every afternoon. They work really, really hard to foster great relationships with them, so we thank you for going the extra mile. As far as food services are concerned, all schools are, will be ready, have received all of their opening orders, kitchens have been tested, food has been delivered, cafeterias are staffed and ready to welcome our students. Twenty-five thousand-plus students are already approved for the meal benefits program for the first day of school. A lot of work has been done there. I mentioned earlier some of our bus drivers coming in for voluntary transportation. Bus drivers have all been recertified. We have been fortunate to take early than anticipated delivery of our bus order from last spring, so we have 15 new buses that will take the road this week, followed by approximately 22 additional buses by early September. And it's just been phenomenal. School-wide security, so update on that. We have officers, confirmed officers, assigned to all of our 27 secondary schools as school resource officers for the first day of school. That's pretty huge. A reminder that as far as elementary schools are concerned, several of our cities have really stepped out there on their own and are partnered with the system to increase school, armed school security within elementary schools. So, the city of Cape Canaveral continues to fund a full-time SRO at Capeview Elementary School. And the city of Rockledge, the city of Rockledge and Rockledge Police Department, they continue to partner with us to fund SROs at Anderson Elementary and Gulfview Elementary. And just then, I think, Mrs. Belford, you may know about this, but our friend Chief Lau up in Titusville, very excited to share that he's committed to provide two additional SROs in support of our Titusville Elementary Schools. Just, I can't say enough about the partnership that we've received throughout this district. Mr. Susan, you mentioned, I don't know how Dane and Sue and the rest of those folks get it done, but about a month ago, I drove by a school, and everything that could be moved was moved, and that school is all back together again right now, waiting for children. So, just to kind of quantify what that means, they completed, through our capital program, they completed 30 projects that touched almost all of the schools in the district, making use of about $55 million in our capital dollars. And as far as what the voters approved back in November 2014, our sales surtax projects, we're able to increase security at 65 of our schools and completed 17 school-specific projects this summer using $46 million of the sales tax this summer. And last but not least, I know Dr. Kent and Human Resources are working day in and day out with principals to make sure every classroom has a teacher in it. We're down to 14 advertised vacancies right now that we don't have teachers for, but HR is on it, principals are on it, and we're going to have a great day on Thursday and an even better entire year. So, really looking forward and appreciate everyone's hard work in getting us ready. I apologize for the long update, but it's, it's a fraction of all the work that they've been putting in this summer, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. That was a great update, and certainly too much good news not to share. Mr. Susan, I think you have a follow-up?
Two of those positions are construction positions of guys that left our schools to go into industry that we don't have filled. So, we have two construction.
One committed yesterday.
One committed back. So, we got one open. That's like the number one. Thank you. If anybody knows any construction guys, have them apply.
Very good. I have just a few kudos to throw out there. Our, prior to our last board meeting, some of these things occurred, but we were kind of crunched on time at the last meeting, so we kind of glossed over some of it. Need to throw a shout out to Dr. Blackburn and Dr. Kent and all of the team that helped to pull off the Superintendent's Leadership Summit. Wonderful event hosted by Harris. Thank, many thanks to them for their support, wonderful community partners. But also, wanted to specifically thank Dr. Blackburn for the strong message that you sent at the meeting, which I think was heard loud and clear, and that is that all of us folks that work up here at the district office have a very important role of supporting our principals at our schools and supporting our teachers at our schools, and made it very clear that the role of our principals is to support their teachers and their staff. And felt like that was a great message to go out, well-received, and I think it's putting us certainly on the right focus going forward to start the, the school year. That, that message of support seems to be getting through the, the team, so I appreciate that, that you so clearly articulated that. Also, wanted to thank Dr. Sullivan. She had the Secondary Leading and Learning Lunch at her house and had all of the secondary principals, and once again, a really strong message sent to that team. I was able to join them for lunch and a little bit of discussion. Wonderful, wonderful group of principals that we have, hardworking, really excited for the upcoming school year. But one thing that really stood out to me in Dr. Sullivan's message was the importance of feeling able to be vulnerable and, and reaching out for assistance when they needed assistance, and the really hitting home the message that this is a team, and it takes all of us to work together, and don't ever be fearful to reach out because our role here at the district is to do that support. So, very much appreciated, Dr. Sullivan, for that message. Had the opportunity to join Dr. Klein briefly, or Jane Klein briefly, with the elementary leading and learning principals, and some great energy there. Also, off on a great footing to start the new school year, and then had the opportunity to join the Titusville High School feeder chain. So, Titusville High School, Jackson Middle School, Apollo, Imperial, Kokina, and Enterprise was also invited to attend. They had a wonderful speaker at Titusville High School a couple of weeks ago, or I guess last week, John Pericon, who had just a great message that I really wish everyone could hear. And the focus of that message was regardless of how difficult our days are sometimes in the schools, in the district, in, in trying to meet those needs, the most important thing for us to focus on is why do we do what we do? And we do it for the kids. And so, if we can stay focused there and staying passionate and really keeping our mind on that, the other stuff tends to, to go by the wayside. We can make a huge impact if we stay focused in the right place. So, really loved that message and appreciated it. The Titusville High School feeder chain seemed to really appreciate the message as well. And I got to tell you, when I pulled up in the parking lot that morning at THS, I was on the phone trying to handle some stuff before I went in, and all the teachers were coming in. It was the first day back for teachers, and they were all kind of filtering into the, to the campus, and wonderful, wonderful energy, huge smiles, huge hugs. In the cafeteria, the energy was great, and the auditorium, the energy was great. So, I, I think that we are just going to do wonderful things this year as a district for our students, so I'm very excited, and I thank all of you for all of your hard work. Any additional follow-up comments that we need to give in there? Okay. Then I do believe that that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 12 consent items, three action items, and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. You have a revision to Item A5 on Administrative Staff Recommendations, revisions to Item F11 on Instructional Staff Recommendations, and Item F17 on Design Services for Facility Renewal West Shore Junior Senior High, Stevenson Elementary, Quest Elementary, Gemini Elementary, and Harbor City Elementary. There was also a revision to Item G21 on Revision of School Board Policy 5517.01, Bullying and Harassment, as well as the deletion of the notification of intention to terminate Legacy Academy Charter.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve A4.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan to approve August 8th, 2017 agenda. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford. There is one administrative staff member for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve A5.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
He's been waiting.
Okay. Then please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
Please join me in congratulating Kathryn McNutt on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month assistant principal at Melbourne High School to the position of 12-month assistant principal at Hoover Middle School.
Thank you, board members, and Dr. Blackburn, and thank you to Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Bowman for being so warm and supportive. As you all know, there are countless people who inspire you and carry you through your leadership journey, so I'd like to take a minute to just thank a few of them tonight. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Kirk. You have been incredibly supportive and understanding over my several years with you, and I appreciate your strong leadership and that you are such a good person, so thank you so much. To Mr. Flora, who is here tonight also, thank you so much for being my sounding board and guiding me through my first crazy year in administration. You're a wealth of knowledge, and I appreciate you, and I'll still see you at the mailbox. To my other Mel-Hi administrators who are not here tonight, Jim Meagan, Todd Rasmann, and Cindy Lou Kilmer, they have been my family away from my family, and so I appreciate them so much, and all of the Mel-Hi teachers and staff who have been incredibly encouraging and supportive. I'd like to also just thank some of the other administrators who have touched my life in some way over the years, everyone from Darlene Rogers to Bobby Pruitt and James Raymer and Tim Rooney and Mike Alba. There are so many. I can't name them all, but I just want to thank them personally. And to Bert Clark, who is the man, and I now, for the second time in my career, have gigantic shoes to fill, I'd like to thank him for all that he's done for me. Most importantly, I want to thank my wonderful husband, who is not here tonight, and my parents who are here, my daughter, who has now been walked into the back because she was talking as you all were talking earlier. Without them, I wouldn't be here tonight with all their love and support. And to Mr. Merrill and my new Hoover family, I am so excited and so honored to be selected to work with you and to take on this responsibility because your team is so highly regarded. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Duskovich?
Yeah, it's a little out of protocol, sorry, but I just want to say congratulations to Ms. McNutt. I am so thrilled. I think she is a huge example of what leadership is, the future of leadership looks like in our district. She has been the AP at my son's school the last several years, and, well, the AP and the testing coordinator before that, and she's always beyond professional and goes above and beyond, working herself to death, and I don't want to say your tail off from up here, but working beyond what most people work, and with the most positive attitude, and has helped our family tremendously through, you know, some trials. So, thank you, Ms. McNutt.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. All right, we are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt or no terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken this, this evening by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, or request that a response to a specific speaker be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name when you approach. We have three speakers scheduled this evening in this order, Dan Bennett, Sandra Chabani, and Vanessa Skipper. Dan, if you would please approach.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Blackburn. You caught us off guard, the meeting's moving so fast, which is fine, this don't change anything, but usually we sit through, usually we have to ignore you for hours before we come up here. But it's good to be here. We all were just, began the meeting by listing accomplishments and good things going on, and I may not have heard it, but there is one accomplishment that we should focus on, a collaborative effort that I am looking forward to seeing it come to fruition, which is the new discipline plan for, for the district. I don't know if anybody mentioned it up there. But, Dr. Blackburn, you told us when you got here that you were going to work on a consistent discipline plan across the county. Teachers needed it for years, it was part of the morale problem, and that plan is being delivered the first day of school, which is a success. When we think of discipline plan, at least in terms of teachers and, and to represent teachers, we think of what can we do to improve the behavior of children in general in the classroom? And one important step is, has been taken by the district, which is kind of list out everything, define the issues, define the offenses, and then, you know, set a series of consequences and corrective actions, as we call them now, to try to set children on the right path. But another piece of that came about with some of the collaborative talks that Dr. Blackburn was talking about, Gary, Dr. Blackburn, and Debbie Greco from 1010. We were meeting for, for weeks and months with this, and eventually he referred us to Dr. Thede and other folks at the district level. Dr. Bobursky was involved, and Melissa, whose name I can never say, the last name. But we did some good work coming together. Could take us, could take us. So, we did some good work together in coming up with something else in addition to a five-step discipline plan. We call it Level Zero, which is a challenge to administrators to, when they pop into classrooms, engage with students that, you know, tend to be troublesome or might need some attention. While the discipline plan is all about what happens when there's a referral, where we can really work together to improve the outlook for children is what happens between the referrals. I mean, if we're, if we're ever going to ultimately reduce the number of referrals, it's kind of come from giving the kids who need attention positive attention, when they're doing things right, or maybe when they're slipping. At any rate, we, we could talk about this forever, but the good news is that every administrator in this county has seen a presentation on what Level Zero is all about. Building reps across the county were invited to speak to their faculties. I only heard from one principal that said the building rep couldn't speak, but we heard from every, every school where building reps were allowed to talk about this too, and we're looking forward to this happening in school together, working together. We're going to, we're going to make our classrooms even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Sandra Chabani?
Good evening. My name is Sandra Chabani. I'm a mom of three students in Brevard Public School. I have two daughters at Mel-Hi, a freshman, rising freshman, rising sophomore, and a child, second grader at Indy Atlantic Elementary. Reason I'm here is I'd like to propose for Brevard County to Reason I'm here is I'd like to propose for Brevard County to take on what other states and what our counties have done, which they have banned homework for elementary students. Instead, they are focusing on reading. As a mom of high schoolers and who are not great standardized test takers, I am now seeing the consequence of reading not being as important when they were in elementary. We can try to do that at home, but between school activities and after-school activities and everything else, my seven-year-old, last year, would come home screaming, crying, because he had to sit there and have to do pages of homework in first grade level. Loved the teacher, loved the school, nothing negative about them, but it was just what's the standard, you know, what they have to do. There's plenty of research that I have printed that I have brought with me, that necessarily doing homework, students who do homework necessarily don't do better than students who do not do homework. Also, there is research that shows that doing homework can have a negative impact on little small children. They're just beginning their school years. I don't, you know, my child right now associates school, homework with crying, and that's gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be a pleasant year. They're little, they're already in school for seven and a half hours, they're required to sit down, they're required to do so much work, they don't need to come home and just having to sit down and do more work. If we could implement 20 minutes of reading, what Marion County has passed, I think would be phenomenal. Mandatory reading, it can be anything that they can enjoy. Play is the best way to, I think, learn, creativity, go out there, they can build force, they can do stuff, and just have a blast and be a child again. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Skipper.
Good evening. Vanessa Skipper, Brevard Federation of Teachers, English teacher at Coco High School. Echoing a lot of what you guys have said, I'm excited to get back into the classroom on Thursday. I've had students in my classrooms since yesterday, they were just supposed to come yesterday to record some stuff, and then they asked if they could come today, and I said yes, and they asked if they could come tomorrow, and I said yes, which is only ironic because they were complaining about the two hours I asked them to come in yesterday. So I, I was trying to remind them that they actually have to come back Thursday. Just a connection to the last speaker's speech, I did some professional development this summer, and one of the courses we offer through BFT has a component about using homework effectively, and I think that is definitely something that both elementary and secondary levels need to look into, because our kids are inundated with the standardized testing mania. I wanted to thank the district for the movement that we made at the bargaining table. I felt that there was a, a much more respectful rapport coming from both sides, so I really appreciate that. I think, obviously, we, we made some movement, but I think one of the most important things that we decided on yesterday was really guaranteeing teachers that 30-minute duty-free lunch. I, I think sometimes we might not think that it's important, or we might take it for granted, but honestly, the first time I get a chance to use the restroom is at 12:23, and that's after having students since 8:45. And so I have to choose my minutes wisely on the time I spend to use the restroom, to eat, to get my thoughts collected and get ready for the class that's coming in. And when that 30 minutes is shortened to even 28, 27, 26, it wreaks havoc on a professional's ability to get themselves back into the moment and to maybe calm themselves down, refocus, reflect, get ready for those afternoon classes. So I'd like to say thank you very much, because that, to me, is one of the most important things as a professional. The next thing that I'd like to see a little bit more movement on is IPIS, our evaluation system. And the district and BFT has worked hand-in-hand over the past few years to pare that down into something that's very manageable. It's become something that I have immersed myself in as a professional. I have looked at the dimensions, I've looked at the elements, and I have tried to pair that with my lessons to make sure I am a distinguished educator. So to not have that in my contract as something that is expected out of administrators to follow and teachers to follow is just kind of asinine to me, because if I'm expected to follow it, I expect an administrator to follow it. I expect an administrator to engage in effective collaborative conversations in each element with their teachers. I expect an administrator to mark teachers fairly and not to reach the end of the year marking a teacher.
Ms. Skipper, I apologize, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
The board wishes to thank all of this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is very much appreciated. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are 12 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any of the consent items?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Any discussion?
No.
Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. That moves us on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are three items for your consideration. The first one is item G19 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan to approve item G19. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0, Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G20 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes 5-0, Dr. Blackburn.
Item G21 is on the revision of school board policy 5517 dot zero one, bullying and harassment.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item G21. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ziegler. Oh, yes. Sorry, we had the motion, so we're open for discussion. Go ahead.
Just to the board, as you saw, I had sent an email last week concerned about this item and asked it to be pulled. I was trying to, being that it is so important, I was reading through it, and I was comparing past to changes to present, and I couldn't figure out how they got from A to Z, and I was concerned that it wasn't consistent, and so that's when, anyways, thank you for staff for getting back to me and going over it with me and explaining to me why it was so confusing, because there were so many changes. It is a very good policy, I do support the policy, but I wanted the board members to know that when it comes to policy, if in doubt, speak out. I just was very concerned, but my concerns have been clear, and I do support the policy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ziegler, any additional discussion on the item? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Blackburn.
There is only one item under the information category.
Does any board member wish to discuss this item? Okay, then we are now at board member reports and discussion points. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Any board member wish to discuss? Mr. Susan.
Yeah, I had a quick, see if what the, what you guys thought about it. The Viera Middle School has a piece of property that has a lease agreement now, and it's very rare, and I think Dane said it's the first time in history that we've had something like that, where we receive revenue from a vacant piece of property that we're utilizing. I'm noticing throughout the county that, and Satellite in particular, that there's some projects that needed just a little bit to get over the hump. My idea being the fact that this money comes directly from the community would be that we could possibly utilize that towards the, getting those groups like Satellite High School to get just over the hump as far as a track surface or a artificial turf or something like that. We have Merritt Island that's gonna have track issues, Satellite's trying to get over the bend, and I just wanted to see what you guys thought about something like that.
Mr. Craig.
Taking an existing, Craig, I look for you for direction here, ma'am.
No, I would, I would like to know more about that connection. Are you, are you suggesting taking money from one area, but one district, and to supporting projects in another district?
I could say, I could say, let's use it for Viera High School, but I think that's unfair. I think it's an ongoing lease that we receive as money, and I thought, being the fact that there's need at Satellite right now, and in the future, maybe Merritt Island would need it. It would be for...
So would this be then implemented into the, to the fund that, that Facilities has set up?
Yes.
For community partnership type things?
Matching.
Matching, the matching?
But specific to facilities for the fields and stuff like that.
I'd like to probably get more information from Facilities, but I think there's certainly merit to that discussion point.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Duskovich.
Well, I've been looking for a way to help Satellite, so thank you for digging around and coming up with that. We'd have to hear more from Mr. Theodore and if that was tagged for something else, but I think that's a very creative idea. Appreciate it.
Mr. Ziegler.
The expenses such as the track at Satellite, which I would like to see funded somehow, there is an application, if I recall correctly, for a match of about 25, but there's still a deficiency of about 30. It's a non-recurring, we have that occurring a few other places also, I believe, Mr. Craig at Merritt Island. Being that it's a non-recurring expense, that would typically come from non-recurring revenue, which is one of the reasons that I'm also digging in on the federally connected, because I think that's a great application of some of those funds that are in that pot that's non-recurring. Going forward, that's a different story, but the money in federally connected that we have sitting there, that's non-recurring at this point, and I think there's some great little projects that will get funded no other way than through non-recurring. I do like Matt's idea, I have no objections to it, but it would be nice if we identified some of those kind of projects and put our heads together and figured out ways to fund them, because a lot of them will never rise to the level of importance of our typical recurring funding streams. But I can see by the head nodding up here that there's a desire to find a solution to some of those. I will say again, if the federally connected, at least some of that will solve some of those problems, but I agree that we need to look at a way. Mr. Susan, that's another great idea. The question is, what has that money been earmarked for, what is the typical plan? And like Mr. Craig, I would need some more information from Facilities on how that is structured, but nice suggestion.
I would, I would second what was said by all of my peers on that issue, especially on, on getting additional information. I think it's a great creative idea, I appreciate you looking at it, and, and would certainly welcome additional information. I, I'm gonna have to throw out something here for our elementary folks, because we hear it repeatedly, and that is that the district funds things like tracks, football fields, swimming pools, we don't do anything for playgrounds at elementary schools. So my request would be that we take a look at that when we're taking a look at, and it's only because, we've heard it over and over and over again, our good friend Courtney Barker has, has been for years now bringing that issue up, and, and it's been brought up in other places, and I think it's a legitimate concern. We're, we're providing funds to support athletics at the secondary level, but we're not doing anything to support outdoor activity at the elementary level, and I think that's critical, especially as we look at mandatory recess and, you know, obesity rates in children and, and attention issues in schools and discipline issues in schools, I think it has to be a part of the equation. The other thing that I will say on it is that perhaps this is an opportunity for us to also, as we're having this conversation, look at additional opportunities for revenue generation on some of our vacant lands. I, I think that we should, we should dig as deep as we can. I know there's, Dr. Blackburn and I have a meeting on Friday that will be discussing a similar situation where, where we're hopefully working on some collaborations, but also generating some, some revenue that may be beneficial. So I applaud you for your creativity, and I think there certainly is lots of room for discussion around that as a whole.
The county's willing to break leases that they have on those, some of those county funds, so that we can sell those properties and put them on the tax rolls, so that we can make money too. That's a, they're, they're very positive on the other side of the aisle for that. Another one of the ideas that I had was, we have a, a lot of our stuff that we DCR and we get rid of, goes into a, a bin to recycle, but they don't break it down, and what ends up happening is a lot of revenue gets lost, and they were asking if they would be able to set up a couple of bins where they can throw just separate stuff to bring in more revenue for the program, and that's something for a conversation, Dr. Blackburn, to see if, I know Osceola and Seminole and Orange do it, and they bring in about six, seven times as much as we do per weight because of what they do. So that would be another revenue stream. And then I had one last one. We're getting ready in our community to redistrict and rezone some of the boundary issues, right? But one in particular that's not being touched at all is the fact that Manatee Elementary has, on other side of 95, a group of apartments that kids are within the two-mile range. Right now, Viera Boulevard, which is their two-mile run to Manatee Elementary, is about to be redone as a diamond-shaped bypass system that we don't see here in the county, that Viera Company's bringing in. My fear, and what I may ask staff to look into, is I'm afraid I'm gonna have a kid who decides that it's okay to go through the diamond to get to Manatee Elementary, ride their bicycle in elementary school, because we don't provide the busing, and then that situation occurs. So I didn't know if there's an opportunity through busing to make exceptions for specific places to bus due to hazardous conditions, but I would like to give Dr. Blackburn direction and try to find that out. We have a whole year, so.
We, there are, there are issues, opportunities to address hazardous conditions, and they have to fall within certain ramifications, so that would be a, RB, I'm sure we'd be happy to take a look at that with you. Mr. Ziegler.
We've been down that road before. FDOT stipulates and FD, and Department of Education stipulates hazardous spork paths. This board can also deem a path hazardous, and so I would agree that, based on perception of what that's gonna be, that would be hazardous, but I think it's great that you bring it up now, because maybe that can be designed into boundaries to solve that problem.
Yeah, I don't know if it does.
I don't know, but yeah, we would, we will never let a child walk a hazardous path that this board feels, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Mr. Ziegler, I would like to just caution you on the statement of this board can deem paths to be hazardous, because I, I fear that, I, I'm not saying that we can't, my point is, there are a whole lot of people that would like for their paths to be deemed hazardous, and I think that we need to make it very clear that there are limitations within that. We can't, we can't randomly go out and decide that every path to a school is, is hazardous, you know what I mean? I just, I, I just...
There are, there are, there are guidelines, and we get recommendations from staff.
Right.
However, I think the litmus test has been in the past is that if it was our elementary school kid, would we want them walking a particular path? Because there are, for example, we did this down in A1A, where the walking path was by all definitions acceptable, yet it was a white line on the black asphalt of A1A that was a walking path. So under no circumstance did it meet any guideline, other than it just didn't pass that litmus test, would we want our kids walking that path?
Right. And I think that's important discussion to have. My only concern is, I, I don't want our public thinking that we, as a board, can just snap our fingers and make every path that there are concerns about hazardous path and provide transportation, because that gets, gets cumbersome. So I just wanted to qualify for the public. Any additional board reports, discussions, direction that we need to cover? All right, Dr. Blackburn, anything from you?
Let's go get those kids.
There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.